Thank you for the floor to sit. I'll both have a business draw near your attention.
I'd like to appreciate, thank everyone for being here for this commission meeting of July the 19th, 2021. And I'd like next to the, uh, toward the prayer they led by Commissioner Tim Crowe and the pledge of allegiance by Commissioner Jerry Emerson.
That's right. Where we come to, or not before we know how, we're a prayer for the Lord that we're allowed to live in this state as Canada. We just ask you, Lord, that we be sent here together, Lord, that this is Canada, Lord, everything to be done in our least strict in your will, and we'll do it with peace and stability. Lord, we, we wouldn't want to say prayer now, Lord, without a special prayer, Lord, our parental commissioner here, Ms. Jordan, for the reasons we've asked about, and we just ask you to strengthen our faith in your time of need, may as well be a prayer. Thank you.
Praise the nations, good Friday, of the United States of America, and to the Republic which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next, if I can have a roll call, please.
Johnny Garner.
Here.
Jerry Low.
Here.
Larry Blackstock.
Here.
Al McKenna.
Here.
Andrea Holland.
Here.
Jackie Butler.
Here.
Ann Moore. Carolyn Higgins.
Here.
Russell Blaken.
Here.
Jerry Emerson.
Here.
Sandra Hyers.
Here.
Joseph Malaro.
Here.
Barry Smith.
Here.
Tim Crowe.
Here.
Diane Jordan.
Here.
Mike Alexander. Todd Lewis. Fourteen questions, three answers.
Next on the agenda, we'd like to approve the amendments for the special call meeting of June the 21st, 2021.
I approve it, sir.
We have a motion to approve.
Aye.
Commissioner Larry Blackstock. Al McKenna, sorry. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Next, we'll have to order the reports and the amendments, starting with the school system superintendent. So what goes?
Good evening.
You notice from our quarter of four, our final quarter of four, that we're closing out the year, well, uh, where we have our expenditure, we're a little bit less in budget in most of not all areas, and then on the revenue side, there's where our budget in some areas.
I make the motion to approve. We have a motion to approve this. We're going to report the school by Commissioner Russell Blaken, second by Commissioner Blackstock. Larry Blackstock. Any discussion about the school, like the point of the vote? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Yeah, I have two legislative amendments.
One of the amendments I just want to speak very quickly about, we applied for a grant for a school district called the Ethneology of Latin Passing Grant. It's a partnership that will be occurring with the school district and local medical provider, where we will be able to for staff and students at the need or discretion to do code testing during school nights, so we don't have to partner with some clinic immediately or send our staff, which we just could, so they can do it in-house.
Motion approved.
We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Garner.
Second, I approve.
Second by Commissioner Emerson. Any more discussion of the budget amendments? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Next on the agenda, we have the highway department. The highway department was closed today at 11:00. They have, uh, three cases of the new Delta virus, and health department referred us to close them this week, and, uh, they have a person home call, but, uh, they're quarantined this week at home. We'd like to ask for prayer for the highway department. But everyone, I believe, received their, uh, quarterly report.
I approve the quarterly report, second.
Director, Commissioner Larry Blackstock, making a motion, second by Commissioner Al McKenna. Any discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And on to their budget amendments, the highway department has no budget amendments, so... Next on the agenda, we have the trustee report.
Let everybody have a report this time. We're going to want to point out to you this, this time, is the, uh, will pay far, very far. Forty thousand dollars, a little few taxes, that's, uh, taxes already paid, going forward to 2021. We won't know those taxes, they're just until September, October, but that's, it takes that three pages off, approved before seven years ago, when they collect taxes, okay? Thank you, Mr. Anderson.
I make the motion to approve the court of law, Lord.
We have a motion to approve the quarterly report for Commissioner Tim Crowe and second by Commissioner Ms. Higgins. Any discussion? All in favor?
No, the rest of your advocates, did you receive any help?
These, uh, this quarterly report ends as of July, uh, 2/30, and those funds will not proceed until July.
Okay.
But they, we, we have to, have to happen when our position is.
Okay.
Any more discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Next, we have the county general, who needs to keep the note.
Good evening. Good evening. Did everyone hear the copy of our report? We, uh, we finished, uh, the year, I think, underestimated, uh, revenues underestimated, this year, just have a thing I can about, uh, we can have a review on that. Any questions that we'd like to answer?
I make the motion to approve.
I second.
We have a motion to approve the county general by Commissioner Clayton and the second by Commissioner Higgins. Any discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Now, on to the solid place for the also by Mr. Jefferson.
Uh, sadly, I'm a solid race before, uh, a present made in an underestimate, uh, as late in the whole of the ballot, uh, we never voted to make it until September or October, without having to ask for any additional funding, like we talked about last year, and I'm real sure about that this year, but if there's any question, I'll go and answer.
I move to approve. I second.
We have a motion to approve of Commissioner Clayton, second by Commissioner Emerson. Any discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
You have the library fund?
Yes, now for the library fund, also Mr. Jefferson.
Any questions about the library?
I move to approve.
I second, Andrew Hall.
We have a motion to approve, Commissioner Blackstock, and the second by Commissioner Holland. Any discussion with library report? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Did you have time?
True.
I approve.
We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Garner.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Tim Crowe. Any discussion with the drug fund? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Next is the, uh, 10th service.
10th service.
Because of all these, just, that's our work we take over, but, yeah, service, uh, jail tax, and I think.
I make the motion to approve of this, officer.
We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Tim Crowe, second by Commissioner Holland. Any discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
I have, uh, all of the units, uh, two, we can start, uh, actually, I left one off of the county, people, and I'll see you on that. Uh, I know that is correct, the longevity paying, we count, uh, steps for longevity pay, this is 57,990 a year, uh, and just collecting increase, pressure 25-year period, and we missed paying our last year for the longevity, so we ended up getting that correction with. And also, uh, had to get, there was a discrepancy in last year's, uh, figure of our two pass to this year of 73 dollars, that house per staff would be short, and the budget was 73 dollars, so I would ask for a pickup to include that.
Second.
Motion to approve of Commissioner Blackstock and second by Commissioner Garner. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye to the budget amendment?
Aye.
Any opposed?
And in solid waste, we, uh, I, budget thanks to the long, uh, you should, you can be management, and, uh, I'm asking to correct that here in this, in this budget.
I make the motion to approve.
I second.
We have a motion to approve of Commissioner Clayton, second by Commissioner Holland. Any discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Next on the agenda is the planning commission.
Planning Commission has a financial report, however, uh, we now have a, our maintenance coach, enforcement officer, Deion Davis, is now at work. Uh, we have, uh, gotten all the subdivision regulations and planning gun, uh, that people hopefully won't get out of the county, and so that's underway right now, so... As I said, we will be tomorrow night at 6:00 in this room for a training session.
All right, thank you. Next on new business, I, I want to change the agenda, because I know most people that's here for the, got the region's building. I want to first go over our perimeters and stipulations of the American Rescue Act Plan. Guidance concerning for allowable expenses for funds under the American Rescue Plan Act, state and local physical recovery fund, is being modified every day. After discussion, CTEST and the Treasury of Comptroller, uh, the Comptroller of the Treasury, I'm sorry, they, they recommended that all local government wait on finalizing plans to use these funds. The vacated region's building is only going to be purchased with these funds, because in our last commission meeting, it was passed that we consider the purchase only if the American Rescue Fund therefore could be used. Therefore, being unclear of the guidance of these funds, I'm asking the commissioners, if we table this issue, the US Treasury is expected to issue the final guidance for this act in September. They are urging us not to, uh, use these funds to find the guidance. So, I would like to ask that the commissioner make the motion for this.
Mr. Johnson, under the, we titled this, we'll keep you waiting. Discussion on that.
Second.
We have a motion to table by Commissioner Barry Smith and second by Commissioner Al McKenna. If there had been any discussion, uh, I know that most people here is for, here for the reason, possibly for a bank, but I've been on the phone most of the day with CTEST and Comptroller to, to see, because I knew there possibly might be a vote on it today, but they, their advice was to table. So, uh, that is the reason that I brought this to the commission. So we have a, uh, motion and a second, and... I'm sorry, okay. Yeah, it's a tape, let's, let's go.
Johnny Garner.
Yeah.
Whoa, 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 can we still discuss the motion as a full commission? Can we still discuss this motion as a full commission, after you have the first and the second?
Yes. Yes, we can discuss it, we have, we have a motion and a second to the table.
Yes, we do. But besides the information you shared, Mayor, you've shared some inaccurate information as well. This is the second mailing I came to your office that states that unused portions will go to other counties. That's what it says on your information package you sent out. It stated several times, like folks in here, is valid and false, it is misinformation. It clearly says on the guidance, and I verified that today, the county office as well, unused portions go back to the federal government, they don't rule of state, they do not go to other counties. But it's written here that it goes to other counties. Okay, it's inaccurate information, you tried to make that out past the meeting, but my fear is that there's a lot of this information that we share with very few people. We had a long-range planning committee meeting two weeks ago. Chairman Lewis scheduled his long-range planning committee, we had a meeting. There's nothing out here that says we're getting an update from that meeting. When a committee meets, we share an update with the whole group when we have a meeting. One of the motions that was voted unanimously on in that meeting was to give just this, slow down before the discussions behind individuals, until such time we're able to have better insight and information from the guidance. Also, another motion that has been managed in that meeting was that we share with the commission our recommendation to provide the public forum for the citizens to give us the input, another very specific guideline provided by the county office, and we have yet to do that, that's what we've been asking for, for the first time until now. If taken, yes. But also, I understand you also have a budget committee, I mean, have got a long-range planning committee.
We had a budget.
Did you have a budget committee?
Yes.
We almost discussed the budget committee, we don't see the minutes, the group, kind of, they refer to here.
The budget committee maybe was only some other surgeons. The chairman, Mr. Higgins, you went to, uh, interact, even though that is a difficult thing to do, is...
But there's nothing out here to address this. Was there anything regarding the region bank discussed in the budget? Was there any discussion about the region bank and possible purchases in the budget committee?
Was there discussion, too?
It was not officially what was on the agenda for the night, yes, there was discussion about the region bill, yes. Mayor, I'm trying to make a subtle point here with my fellow commissioners, if there was no vote or action taken that night, if there was discussion... And I have had multiple discussions of this.
Well, the, the budget committee had the first discussion, but we didn't bring the recommendation to the commission, commission at that time. But their, their discussion at the budget meeting, uh, the first time, uh, in June, I can't remember exactly, was, uh, to consider the purchase of it, which is exactly what was in the commission meeting, uh, and it was voted on, and it passed by one vote. I have to get the minutes to say the rest, but at the moment, we have a motion to table and a second. Any more discussion? If not, I'd like to have a roll call vote on this.
Mr. Johnson, I got a question.
Yes, sir.
Is this roll call concerning putting this off until the first of September?
Yes, sir.
And if we wasn't giving this money between now and the first of September, and they don't vote through, will we be liable for the money to pay back?
That's, that is correct, that's the reason we're wanting to wait until the guidance is clear, that, uh, the money will be covered for the purchase through the relief fund. And they're supposed to have the clear guidance out in September, the US Treasury.
And the US vote will clear both of them?
Sir?
The US vote will clear both of them?
Yes, to table it and postpone it until the guidance is clear, that the money can be used for purchase before we ever vote, in case it passed, I don't, I had, we asked specifically that it would not be voted on unless the money was sure to come from the covered relief funds and not from taxpayers of the county. That is the reason I'm asking, wanting to table until we get clarification that it would be covered. Whether it passed or not, I won't, you know...
I'd be in support of table before that if we include the provision that the other guidelines are also met, which is providing the public forum to get feedback from citizens to the faculty on how best to spend it. We have until 2024 to allocate money and 2026 to spend them all. Let's use that time, and let's make sure we keep the interest of the law and the family at the forefront.
Yes, sir. Any other discussion?
Quiet, call, I approve.
Johnny Garner.
Hold on for questions, yes.
Hold on. Johnny Garner.
Hold on for questions, yes.
Jerry Low.
Yes.
Larry Blackstock.
Yes.
Al McKenna.
Here.
Andrea Holland.
Yes.
Jackie Butler.
Yes.
Ann Moore. Carolyn Higgins.
Yes.
Russell Blaken.
Yes.
Jerry Emerson.
Yes.
Sandra Hyers. Joseph Malaro.
Yes.
Barry Smith.
Yes.
Tim Crowe.
Yes.
Diane Jordan.
Yes.
Mike Alexander. John Welch. Todd Lewis. All right, fourteen board, question.
Our question now will go up to the second.
Motion to table Ranger Blackstock. Johnny Garner.
Yes.
Jerry Low.
Yes.
Larry Blackstock.
Yes.
Al McKenna.
Here.
Andrea Holland.
Yes.
Jackie Butler.
No.
Ann Moore. Carolyn Higgins.
Yes.
Russell Blaken.
Yes.
Jerry Emerson.
Yes.
Sandra Hyers.
Yes.
Joseph Malaro.
Yes.
Barry Smith.
Yes.
Tim Crowe.
Yes.
Diane Jordan.
Yes.
Mike Alexander. Todd Lewis. Fourteen. Oh, sorry, thirteen more, thirteen more.
So this will be tabled until the further guidance is clear, and we know exactly that it can be covered. Next on to the agenda, uh, discuss, consider, appoint any interested district citizen to finish a recent vacated commissionership in District Six. Okay, in, in appointing the commissioner here to finish the vacated seat, we have three interested citizens. All three citizens do live in the District Six. They are Terry Bell, Ronald Moten, and Renee Phelps. The way we're going to do is, we're going to roll call, and each commissioner is to give the name of the interested citizen for the seat. If any one citizen has the majority of the votes, the selection is over. If not, the lowest vote getter will drop off, and then we'll roll call again for the majority. The selected citizen will assume the commissioner's term after being sworn in for the September 2021. So, the three citizens to be considered for the commissioners are Terry Bell, Ronald Moten, and Renee Phelps. Does everyone understand what we're doing?
The chairman, all in favor? If they can, uh, leave, uh, for the roll call.
Well, your people. It, it's a big, uh, like, that is, uh, what I mean. Yes, now, this commission seat is only filling out the rest of this term, which is this, the, the one chosen will have to run again, or if they elect to, to run again, this coming next August for a commissioner's seat. And the majority being eight, right? Anyone gets nine, the selection is over, so we'll have a roll call.
It's now, are you voting?
Johnny Garner.
Very bad.
Jerry Low.
Low.
Larry Blackstock.
High.
Al McKenna.
High.
Andrea Holland.
Terry Bell.
Jackie Butler.
Ronnie Moten.
Ann Moore. I'm sorry, Carolyn Higgins.
Ma'am.
Russell Blaken.
Ma'am.
Jerry Emerson. Very bad. Sandra Hyer.
One of these I don't know, so I wish that we could have had each one speak to us, so if there's something about. But, um. Terry Bell.
That's it.
Okay, Terry Bell filled the term of the vacated commissioner's seat until the next election. On to the agenda. We have a consideration of the resolution of the litter grant, Ms. Amber Green.
Good evening, good morning. Every year, Tennessee Department of Transportation provides Chester County with a litter grant. It is forty-four thousand two hundred dollars. This money provides a jailer to clean our roadways with inmates, an education and outreach for our county. And then we also hold plaid at my office and provide money for that. So we, every year, we go through this resolution because T9 has already. So we will make a motion and a second to approve the litter grant resolution.
I make a motion to approve the.
I say. The motion to approve the litter grant by Commissioner Tim Carroll and second by Commissioner Warner. Any more discussion about the litter grant?
Yes, does it count in our way or think of that?
It just counts in our way. They actually have somebody come in from the state every year that T9 contract.
And it started on October month of two weeks. I might be getting around out there.
On our website, we have a squad report litter complaint and send an email straight to me. And if the jailer don't clean it up at the inmate's house, then somebody else will come in. And we've actually found a couple of late donations in the past six months.
State don't allow it, sir. State don't allow inmates to pick them up without cars in front and behind and the flag on state highway.
Any more questions?
Any more discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any in both. Next on the agenda. We are considering options about the timber on the hundred feet of highway owned by the city and the county also.
This is a thing, the solid waste department along with the solid waste committee have recently had two meetings on the option to cut the timber on our city cap. The solid waste department has taken place since the timber was being cut again this time. The solid waste committee made a recommendation for the solid waste department to look at hiring a company that was recommended by the Tennessee Department of Agriculture Division of Agriculture to look at the timber on the property. Tennessee Timber Consultants will come and do a walkthrough in the next two weeks and give us an idea of what trees are on the property and estimate for free. Once the company looks at the timber and the estimate comes back, the solid waste committee will meet again to discuss the estimate and option to cut timber. Tennessee Timber Consultants will help the county with the bidding process, oversee the job site, and be environmentally responsible to make sure the area is clean after logging is done. If the solid waste committee makes a recommendation to cut timber and hire a consulting company, it will be considered at the commissioner's meeting and will need to be further announced by the whole county commissioner at that time. The solid waste department currently has a small burn area for residential lease and brush. It's at maximum capacity right now. The city is bringing in thirty-five to fifty tons a month of brush, and we're getting anywhere from eighty to a hundred to ten tons a month now. So that area that we added on, because we grew our farm capital, and that area that we added on to down there is a little enclosed pit. It burns efficient, but it doesn't burn enough brush as much as it can. So we were looking at going before the city alderman, depending on county commission approval. If we could take the money that we get if it's not to cut the timber and purchase a used grinder, and this would help keep our brush pile caught up. And that would also need to go before the city alderman, so. And that was a day, does anybody have any questions? Thank you.
Next, we are to consider the ordinance of the redistricting committee. Every ten years, the county, the state, everyone goes to a redistricting, and we base this on the census. And as of now, the census hasn't come back to us to look at, but I still would like to appoint this redistricting committee, which will consist of Jerry Low, Al McKinnon, Ann Moore, Jerry Emerson, Diane Jordan, Todd Lewis, Stephen Morris, and Troy Kilzberger. I would like to give this approval. We probably won't meet until a census bureau gives us some information, which they was told. They sent an email to me telling me it would probably be in September. Ms. Kathy Fest might know more about the dates on it, but.
We should have, technically, have dates of the information by September, and then we have to have it completed by December 31st unless we're going to be staying.
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, excuse me.
Yes, sir.
I would just recommend that you add Kathy to your committee.
Okay, well, yes, sir. I was thinking she would automatically be there, but yes, we need to add Kathy to the order. Because we'll be getting our information from her.
Right.
Yes, and add Kathy Fest on that committee.
I'm a little.
Say, we have a motion to approve a meeting by Commissioner Larry Blackstock and a second by Commissioner Tim Crow. Is there any more discussion about the redistricting committee?
So that does include one current commissioner from each current district?
Yes. Yes, and then now the election commission. I mean, two individuals, that would be two election commission. We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye. Any in both. Next on the agenda. We have other business. And in this other business, I'd like to read a letter from the Carl Perkins Center. It is to the county, county commissioners, and the community leaders. Thank you for receiving and taking time during this meeting to share our information. This being Carl Perkins. We appreciate your leadership and are incredibly grateful for the continued support you have shown our center for many years. The Chester County Carl Perkins Center recently submitted a letter with a long-range planning commission, commission, commissioner, and county mayor. This letter provided information about the mission of the center, center services, the impact that COVID-19 has on our ability to provide services, as well as the concerns and obstacles we face within our current location. It has come to our attention that there is a need for clarification within our community regarding the intentions of the center and what we are coming before the community commissioners and the county mayor to consider. The center did tour the region's bank building in March. We provided information on how the building could be utilized by the center with minimal renovations. When compared to other buildings we have toured. While we did provide information on how the building could be utilized, we also could in closing clarify that we do not want to interfere or create additional burdens or discord around the decisions of the region's bank building. We graciously come to you asking the commissioners and the county mayor to review and consider earmarking American Rescue Plan funds, which could allow us the ability to secure a building for the Chester County's Child Advocacy Center. The region's bank building serves as a template of what the center needs in order to provide all services simultaneously in a manner that follows CDC COVID-19 safety recommendations. But the center is not seeking the region's bank building. Our center cannot do what we do without the love and support of our community. Our intentions and request for consideration of funds are not in call, are consideration of funds are not to cause friction, but to advocate the meaning, the needs of those in our community who are vulnerable and hurting. Chester County children and families need us more now, more than ever before. Our ability to provide needed services is impacted by our current location, and COVID-19 has exacerbated these issues. We are grateful for your time and thought consideration of our request. As together, we can offer our children and families of Chester County the most valuable gift of all, hope. On behalf of the Carl Perkins Center, board members, staff, and children of the families we serve now and years to come, thank you. From Kirby Fox, county director of the Chester County Carl Perkins Center, is here tonight and available to speak after the meeting, to speak with anyone or to schedule a visit to the center. The county director, Kirby Fox, here you are. I thank you for this, this letter that will be in consideration when we get our guidelines.
I just want to say ladies and ladies, we work with them very closely. They provide a very strong asset to this community in this county. And a lot of people don't really realize just what they do if that affects a person. And I'm going to make Kirby and the entire board, I personally appreciate you because I've seen personally. I'm not going to speak for Sherri, but he can speak for himself. I'm sure he agrees with what I'm saying.
I agree a hundred percent. They do a whole, whole lot to this county that people don't see. And a lot of that they do have to pay for if they weren't, if they weren't here.
Yes, thank you. Also, we know the business, we do not have a representative here, but our Dixie Youth has three teams going to the World Series. And each one is in a different state. I know all, before in the past, we have donated, a donation to the Dixie Youth to help the teams go to the World Series. I would like to ask that the commission would entertain an amount to give as a donation to be divided three ways for each team. And I'm not sure if one has left yet, but I know they'll be leaving real soon. And I think one leaves this weekend. And I think it would be good if we, as a county, could give to the Dixie Youth that amount, which would be divided now three ways. So I would like to entertain an amount. And someone, I know in the past, I can't remember.
Do you, what we've done in the past, do you remember five hundred per team? I make a motion. I said the motion would heal five hundred per team.
We have a motion to entertain three times five hundred for each team. Any more discussion about this? If not, we're going to take a roll call.
May I add a question? Yes, Larry. Mark O'Gorman.
Roll, yes.
Johnny Gardner.
Yes.
Jerry Low.
Yes.
Larry Blackstock.
Yeah.
Al McKinnon.
Yeah.
Andrea Hollis.
Yes.
Jackie Butler.
Yes.
Ann Moore. Carolyn Higgins.
Yes.
Russell Plank.
Yeah.
Jerry Emerson.
Yes.
Sandra Hyer.
Yes.
Joseph Flaro.
Yes.
Barry Smith.
Yes.
Tim Pro.
Yes.
Diane Jordan.
Yes.
Mike Alexander. Todd Lewis. Fourteen more.
Thank you, and I'm sure Dixie Youth will appreciate it. Next on, would there be any other business? Yes, sir, Commissioner.
Can you report on the old building?
Yes, we have the we had it looked at, but I think it was a company that gave us a report. And it does show asbestos in it in three different areas. They have referred or gave a name of a company that could come in and take out or dispose of the asbestos, and then we could get a better, I guess you'd say, to decide whether we want to fix it up or tear it down. But the asbestos has to be got out regardless. I have contacted one local company, but they said they don't do it, that they sub it out. So I'm going to call later this week the company to see if they will give us an estimate for the removal of the asbestos. And it is found in three different places, in the windows, the doors, and in the glue that sticks on the tile of the ceiling. And it ain't, it's not in the quarters, so the cost might not be that much. At that time, we'd have a better view to know what to do with the building.
Okay, is the foundation there running still okay?
The, the company that come in and looked at and said the building was found, but there possibly is a roof leak that would have to be fixed. And parts of the inside would have to be removed. That would all come after we lift the asbestos out, we can get the oil to them. That, or see, give us options of what to do with the building.
Great. Oh, Danny, do you know where the asbestos actually came from?
Everybody was roll called, they know there was a place in Arkansas that did the land was plain hard or somebody else. Some of the landfills wasted continuously. If it came here, you should take it in a special place.
Any, any more other business?
Mayor, I would say to request clarification to setting up public forums discussing expenditure for the COVID relief. Which committee will make the decision?
Now, you're asking to have a forum in different parts of the county in each district, possibly?
I'm not specifying anything now, which committee will be responsible for?
Well, I would think that each commissioner in the district that goes there should attend the meeting in that area. So.
I'm saying which, which committees, if one of the committees can be responsible for saying, oh, how we're going to approach.
That will have to be determined later, because this week, under the guidelines, I was wanting instead of having a certain committee to go over these COVID funds and the uses of it, I was wanting to have the whole commission be used for the decisions of the money, not just one committee. And we would schedule a work session, and the whole commission could make a decision. We, everyone would know, it would have to be a recommendation, it would be done in person with each commissioner. Take it forward.
So you're relying on each commissioner to solicit the input?
Yes, we'll try to get plenty of input for, from our control agency to ask what is available at the time. Any other business? If not, the next on the agenda is the nominees.
Charlie, look at the proof.
One second.
We gotta go get the names first. Crystal Gail, Silverton, Chris Goddard.
Exactly.
Crystal Gail Holder, Penny R. Hinsley, Joseph D. Blackley, Blackley, excuse me. Susan Ross, Anne Lynn Vichi, Amy Lynn Vichi, Samantha Hannibal, Cheryl Tauber, Tansanelle Rochelle Patterson, Erica, Erica Minion, that's your A.
My cell was there. Your motion to approve the notice, do we have a second, Commissioner?
There it is.
The column. All in favor of the notice, say aye.
Aye.
Any of both. Next. Ask for a motion for a turn.
Don't move, bro.